Ladies and gentlemen, I've got six o'clock. I will call the June 3 meeting to order. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Barbara McCray.
Please join me in saying the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on here is I need to get a vote to excuse Mr. McMahon. He's out of town and asked to be excused tonight.
I motion to excuse.
Second?
Second.
All in favor. All right. Now, have the June 3 Town Council as presented. Does anybody have anything they want to add? I do have one thing on the surplus banners. You know, the banners that were taken down to surplus and I'm out to explain in a little while if we can just add it somewhere. You got any idea where we ought to add it?
I've got H under new business.
New business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll work. And we have two people signed up for the public session.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you, I may have missed it. Did you take a vote on the approval of the agenda?
I thought we did, yeah. Okay, but maybe we didn't.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
The agenda has amended.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor. Okay, you're right. You're right, I did not.
Let me do the consent agenda.
I guess we could. We're waiting around to five minutes after for the public hearing on the budget, but yeah, I don't know why we couldn't just go ahead and do the consent agenda. Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may really quick.
You may.
Just one note, Ms. Doster and I'd like to point out to the board, you have a new revised budget amendment in front of you. It's for an insurance settlement for Franklin Fire Department. The corrected amount we need you guys to consider tonight is $11,871. This replaces one in your agenda packet. Article consent agenda.
Okay, anybody got any questions on it? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move we approve.
Second? Don't everybody speak up at once?
No, I thought that was...
All in favor. Well, you did, you voted. Okay, let's move on then. We do have a public hearing for the proposed Town of Franklin budget. I think it's, I've got pretty close to five minutes after six.
Close enough.
Okay. Does anyone want to, let me see if anybody has signed up. I do not have anybody signed up for the public hearing on the budget. Is anybody here that wants to speak to the budget? If not, councilor, will we just go ahead and approve the budget as presented or? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, just a couple notations from your last budget work session that we had. A couple of things to note that were added into this agenda was an additional police car at $36,000 that was put in the police department budget. Also under governing board, under, I believe it's your, not contracted services, there's a lot, yes, for economic development, there's an additional line item in there for $15,000 at the board's discretion if you wanted to do public art or anything. The second one, under other professional services in governing board, there's an additional $20,000 that was added in anticipation if the council throughout the year wanted to look at adding or doing a joint partnership with Macon County for our rehabilitation specialist. That's been added. So to accommodate for those requests, there was $40,000 removed from the nonprofit funding pool and $6,000 from facilities in our property maintenance. So that was $46,000. That left a remainder of $25,000 to find from fund balance. So that adds your total fund balance to $214,539, which leaves you with a new budget revenue and expenditures of $4,163,566. That's the proposed budget you have before you tonight.
And that's what we discussed.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes. Okay, any further discussion on it?
We can do the public session.
Hmm?
Public session?
Yeah, yeah, okay. You're right, can't vote on it before the public session. My fault, my bad. Okay, we have two people signed up. Anybody else want to speak to public session? If not, Mr. Horton?
Welcome, sir.
And just to restate, we have a three-minute limit.
All righty. I want to thank you for the opportunity to do a little participatory democracy here. Exhibit A. Obviously, I want to talk about the letter thing that was in the paper. There was, I've lost the paper, but there was a couple weeks ago, suggestion in the town that we do a, adopt a street like Adopt a Highway. I swore before I went to town, I haven't lived in town or in an apartment since 1975, so I'm kind of a feral beast, and I swore I wouldn't pick up after. As my father used to call them, a swiney americani. But eventually, I gave in. These are great, by the way. You can grab stuff, you wouldn't believe how quick while you're walking. How many arrived in a vehicle? Just about everybody. I don't own a car. I live close enough in. I walked, this is what I picked up on a route that I have done a number of times. That was from 131 Clyde, a couple blocks up above the elementary school. You know, it's funny, I was coming across 28 and I had the light with me. I had punched my button and I waited until it was time. And then I'm out crossing the street and I hear somebody cursing and yelling and I turn around and I'm getting the finger from this guy, probably about 20 years old. I think I cost him a second. I took it personal till he caught up with a car in front of him and he started on them. And I'll refer to that later because I think what we have here is an education issue. You know, this is a Band-Aid, you know? We're attacking the problem at the wrong end, a symptom. When I was 12 years old, this was in '47, we lived in Missouri Ozarks, out on the dirt road. There were nine of us in the family. It was a hot August day. I had a silver gum wrapper and threw it out the window. My dad pulled over, he stopped, he said, "Go get it." There wasn't any rubbish at that time. I had to find it. Meanwhile, all my brothers and sisters were cursing me. That was it. I got it. I have worked with children. I was director of a garden, garden director at a public elementary school in California for five years. And they were preschool to second graders. And I'm passionate about gardening. And that is the time to get people interested. I mean, these kids would come in, it was like, "Oh, earthworms, oh." And they would eat anything we grew, parsley, broccoli, everything. So I think what we're dealing with is, oh, and I read that, this just came up about a couple months ago, the most common piece of trash in the ocean is also the most common piece of trash in Franklin. And the reason I ask if anybody drove here, because when you walk around, you see the world in a different way. And cigarette butts, there's voices and they're everywhere. And so I had decided...
Your turn, sir.
Am I timed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm interested.
You want to get to the point real quick?
The point, the point is, I'm interested in helping with this idea and I've already wanted, does anybody know if Lakeshore on the way to the landfill is county, state, or what? What is that street?
I think it's a State Street.
Well, I'm going to adopt that. Whoever it is, I would like to adopt that. It's a mess and it's a big one. And four times a year, it's not enough.
There is an Adopt a Highway program, sir?
Right, yeah, I know.
And Justin, do you have the information, contacts for that?
It's online, yeah.
It's online, yeah. Adopt a Highway.
Right. But I would be happy to help in any way I can with it if it's adopted in town.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir.
This isn't to blow my horn, this is...
No, we know that, we know that it's a problem, absolutely. Ms. Tamara, how are you? Welcome.
Well, I wouldn't sure if I was going to speak or not. This is, maybe the budget, maybe not, anyway. But yeah, and then he showed me this and this is exactly what I want to talk about, the big picture. Okay? Everybody, well, if you haven't been reading the news or keeping up on it, plastic waste is a major global problem. Okay? Some people say climate change is a global problem. Okay? I don't know if it's from global warming, but I don't think anybody can deny after what we've seen in our state and just repeatedly across the country this past year, that climate change is a big problem. Now, so what I want to propose is, and I was a part of this in the 90s when I lived in Rockland County, not Rockland County, well, it was Orange Town, Rockland County in New York. Because in the 90s, we had a sustainability plan. I worked, I was on like a little committee, whatever it was, I forgot exactly, but we had, we were using sustainable development material and ideas back then to implement at the county level. Back then, it was simple, bike paths and walking paths and stuff, not like what we have today. We have very serious problems that are costing us billions of dollars. So anyway, if you could just come up with maybe some idea, this is beginning, like the volunteers, right? But extend it into really looking at what some people are now calling, and this may be a bit alarmist, climate disaster adaptation plans. Of course, that would all be based on whether or not you buy into the whole idea of global warming, climate change, whatever. But nonetheless, there are some good ideas in there that we could incorporate into a sustainable development plan because traffic, this is not going to be able to go on, you know? And relying on tourism, it's a great idea, but we could do sustainable tourism, you know? And look at some new ways so we're not constantly having car traffic. And I just became a member of the Green Party, yeah, anyway. One of the things I want to propose is green credits. I'm going to start proposing that, where you can actually, entities can get credits for being green that translate into real dollars. So, and you know, possibly working to have, when people are driving up to certain areas, they're going to have to go through a booth like they do in New Jersey Turnpike and pay a fee, a green credit, a green, green fee. You want to travel up here, you're going to pay a green fee and that can fund sustainability projects. So those are some of the things, like at the big level, but how can this all be coordinated? How can we all work together to keep this place as beautiful as it is? This is our major resource. It's so valuable just for the entire country and for our region and for our state. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Something you might be interested in, point is that, that Blue Zone is the 6th?
Seven.
At the Chamber of Commerce at 5:00, I believe. That might be something you'd be interested in.
Blue Zone? I don't know, I think I heard about that, yeah.
Okay. All right. New business. All right, the Board Action on the Proposed Town of Franklin Budget for the Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Anybody want to discuss any items? I think we pretty well hashed it out. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
I move we adopt the budget as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right. The North Carolina Department of Transportation Agreement for US 441 widening from south of Cheek Road to south of Belden Circle. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm going to just give you a brief overview, then I'm going to turn it over to Legal. He's got some updates as well. So the proposal that you have before you tonight is from NCDOT project and it's from Belden Circle to South Cheek Road and it's incorporating sidewalks. And it will be the southbound side of US 441 and ending at the entrance to Tractor Supply for approximately around 6,500 feet of sidewalk. Part of this agreement includes relocation of all municipally owned utilities that would be in conflict with the project, so keep that in mind. And then the town assumes maintenance as well if this is constructed and we agree to it. It's a 20% match, the 20% match of the total project is $181,800 and 20% that the town would be responsible for is $36,360. So with that, been in communications with Mr. Henning and I think he wants to go a little bit further with this.
Mr. Mayor, I think it sounds like a fine project and I think, you know, over a mile of sidewalk for $30,000 is a pretty extraordinary deal and you'd take it any day of the week and twice on Sundays, but I have a concern about legal authority to expend the funds because it's outside your corporate limits. That's something that, so I can't recommend you approve it tonight, I'd need to look into it some more. There's very specific statutory authority that says you can work with DOT on this kind of thing inside your corporate limits. There's no doubt about that at all. There's a statute, the statute talks about municipal authority over streets and sidewalks inside the corporate limits and then says, and cities over 250,000 people can exercise that same sort of, sort of thing out in ETJ. This is out in your ETJ and we can wait on the census to shore up the numbers, but I don't think you're getting the 250,000. So that reading goes together, it sounds to me like there may not be authority to expend funds on a sidewalk or a street outside your corporate limits.
Let me ask a question. Why, since it's outside the city limits, would this not be something the county could do? I mean, I don't know. I don't know if they can get in the sidewalk business.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure they can build a sidewalk. I don't know.
Okay. You have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk this through a little bit more and see if I can understand it. There are properties within the town limits that are outside of our town limits and our ETJ that this sidewalk would touch.
About satellite annexes?
Yes.
And I'm aware that there are some down there and that this project would get down to them. But again, you know, they're, they're definitely not part of your corporate limit. The corporate limit, as I understand it, is the contiguous boundary that started a mile out from the very center of town and then has since been annexed, you know, with contiguous property to expand. But, you know, the way that the statute reads about expenditure on sidewalks in partnership with DOT and under your control inside your corporate limits really reads to me like not outside. And the fact that there, you know, at some point, the city of Charlotte or somebody said, "We need some authority to do this in our ETJ, let's add it to the statute." And it got added and said, "250,000 more than have added inside your ETJ for all of this kind of control." But that's, so that reading those together really sounds, that sounds even more to me like you, a town this size doesn't have that authority. So I'm worried that if you did enter into an expenditure like that, it's an audit exception, it's a, you know, it's a taxpayer lawsuit, it's any number of things that say you can't do it.
So it's really disappointing.
Yeah, I mean, following the old adage that a wise man plants a tree under whose shade he'll never sit. Basically, we cannot anticipate that the corporate limits will go farther south than they are right now.
No, I, not with the legislature.
Well, you know...
Unless it's involuntary.
There is voluntary annexation.
I mean, voluntary, excuse me, voluntary.
There is still involuntary, but it's, you know, more or less subject to a referendum.
But that changes as the legislature changes. It may go back to involuntary one day.
That was, yeah, it could.
I mean, there's no reason to believe that the Town of Franklin won't, won't go farther south in the future. It's just we can't anticipate that with the sidewalk plan.
Well, I will say this, that, that is the very kind of thing and the thing about managed, wise, structured growth that was the advantage of involuntary annexation that the League of Municipalities and I think you passed a resolution and everybody knew what the real benefit of that kind of orderly growth was, said at the time that that authority was, was taken away from. "Don't do this, you're making it harder for us to plan where we're going to grow." And so, that's an example.
What schedule? If, if we were able or if someone was, some group was able to donate the 36,000, when would it have to be given?
So you also don't, I mean, you don't have authority unless, and again, that rule about 250,000 citizens is about control and maintenance of sidewalks too. But I'm not sure you can, this, this agreement has you agreeing to put up 36,000?
But how quick?
I don't know how quick they're, and I think the thing will have some thought about how fast they were trying to get it done.
That project looks to be let 2020, I believe. So this agreement is well ahead of the let date of that project.
So it wouldn't have had to have been incorporated in this year's budget?
No, not necessarily. We just, they would like all betterment agreements to be put in before let dates for those contracts.
I mean, there would be nothing, us communicating, nothing wrong with us communicating for the county, try to figure out what we can do for the county legitimately for some value of that if in turn the county sprung for the sidewalks, which I'm sure that they can. We, we, I don't know, I don't have a direct thing in mind.
Right.
But I mean, it has to help the county just as much as it would the town. And if in fact we wanted to participate but couldn't directly, then possibly indirectly. And again, I'm not trying to say I have that answer, but it's something that we ought to consider.
Well, it's a lot of sidewalk for...
It is.
A little bit of money.
It is.
And there's people walking that road regularly.
I know, it's terrible.
Like I said, that, that amount of money for a mile of sidewalk is a tremendous deal.
I mean, hypothetically, if we were to absorb a portion of the greenway, be responsible for it hypothetically, which might be half of the 36,000, it's in the city limits, you know, the proportion of it is, would, could that possibly carve a cooperation framework with the county to end up with a sidewalk? I'm just saying that I believe there's ways to consider that.
How many properties are there? I mean, is there any way to get them to say they want to come in if we're offering them something?
It wouldn't be the corporate limits still, I don't think.
I think you're, and I'd have, we'd have to really study up on this, but I think your better shot would be an involuntary annexation of all of the DOT right of way down through there, which I think you can do. I know, I know we have done it. And I don't think there is likely to care about whether or not they're, the street's annexed in.
That's strange, I never would have thought of that.
And if this, and if the easement's wide enough to, the right of way is wide enough to take in or be the sidewalk through there, then it's in your corporate limit. You don't have this company anymore. So that's, and I, and I don't by any means, you know, mean to try to stick a fork in it because I do think we can try to find a creative way to maybe let it happen. I would be concerned, Joe, in the long run, not as much, yeah, if, I see what you're saying, not, not to maintain, I wouldn't want you to have any responsibility to maintain a sidewalk outside of the limits because I don't think you've got authority to do it and the liability is so nasty on sidewalks, you've just got to steer clear of it. But if it was, there might be some way to exchange or get the property that's going on annexed in.
I have a question. If, if a pedestrian gets hit at one of our satellite annexations or in between our corporate limits in one of our satellite annexations where there's no sidewalk and one of our good police officers in their new police car, do they respond to that or does the county respond to that?
I'm sure that the police is...
Highway Patrol, probably.
Highway Patrol.
Yeah.
Okay. So if, I think Top Paradise, for example, is within the city limits, if something happens there, do you respond to that?
Only in the parking lot of the building.
Only in the parking lot? Okay.
Let, let me throw something out at, as a, as a resident of Franklin, we've got so many places in the town that need sidewalks. And I mean, I don't feel right about something that the county could do when we are hurting so bad for sidewalks inside our own city limits. I know that it's a worthy thing and all of that, but it just looks to me like we need to get our own sidewalks up to speed.
Is this a Powellville situation, Powellville would pay for it?
Yes. Well, I don't know since it's, well, after speaking with Mr. Henning this afternoon, I mean, theoretically going in, it could be, but with the legality, I don't know the answer to that.
Powellville could pay for your sidewalks where you have legal authority to do it.
Right.
That's, it's still, that, that problem stands in the way.
And Bob, I don't, I don't disagree with your sentiment about paying taxpayer dollars, but 20 years from now, when that's all city limits, people are going to say, "Why isn't our sidewalks, you know, servicing all of our city buildings and residents down there?"
Well, at that time, we could do it.
And it's going to cost $300,000.
I won't be here, but maybe you will.
Fair enough.
And it's 80% passing the full grant.
Well, it's our money anyway because it's money we paid to the state. So we'd be getting some of our tax dollars back to get our own sidewalks.
But all of the residents of Franklin are paying county taxes as well.
I don't think you're wrong about the funding, but it's, that's a lot of sidewalk to...
Where do we want to go with this? I guess we could argue it till the cows come home, but we've got a legal problem right here. Yeah, we've got a legal, legal issue here unless, and there's no time limit between now and when we get back together.
I think we feel like we've got the council's consensus to, you're not going to hurry me maybe tonight, but to explore whether there's some, some way to make up.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, my understanding, maybe we discussed this at the budget meeting, I think, that this offer is not on the table in any way for the county.
I think their funding parameters are different in my brief talk with DOT.
That's what I thought, but I don't...
I think your percentage would be higher.
Yeah, I think theirs is, I think, a 40% split. I, I think so. Don't quote me, but in brief discussions with DOT, the size of the municipality doing the work controls the percentage that they would have to pay in. We qualify for the lowest percentage because we're small.
All right, so we're just going to hold off. Is that consensus of the board? Let's hold off and get a ruling.
You're still going to explore the...
We'll bring it back next month before we get a little bit further into it.
Okay. North Carolina Department Agreement for Upgrades in Existing Curb Ramps and Crosswalks on Main Street. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is one we have been talking about for the last couple months in the agreements here before you tonight. That is looking at doing some upgrades to the existing curb ramps on Main Street, incorporating the bulb outs that we had spoke about, and then also the design of the facade brick paper look for your crosswalks. This would be a, the town would relocate the town utilities. I've spoken with your public works director and that will not be an issue at all. It's very minimum. And then it is a 100% match, but that match is just $22,000. And again, that's something you could take out of Powellville.
Now, the 22,000 is for all the crosswalks?
It's for everything.
Do you think that the county might go for four of them in front of the courthouse? Would y'all be, would you object to just asking the county if they would do the four in front of the courthouse? Because it connects four county properties there.
I would ask them to do 6,500 feet of sidewalk and...
I don't think we're on that sidewalk catcher right now.
I understand.
Did we not discuss this a couple...
We did, we did, but I...
Did we vote on it?
No, no. It was not a vote on it, that I remember. I just think that, I, I believe they might be receptive to it. It's, what would it be, a $22,000 roughly?
A $22,000 total.
Total. So it would be, and there were what, eight crosswalks?
I believe seven.
Seven crosswalks.
So a little over 3,100 at crosswalks.
So they would be paying roughly about half of the 22,000, so about $12,000. I mean, would it hurt to ask them if they would?
No, but I don't think our motion needs to rely on them having to pay for it.
No, I don't.
We could ask them out of goodwill if they wanted to contribute some. I think that's fair enough.
It sure going to help the looks of downtown Franklin, I'll tell you that right now regardless of who pays for it. I just, if we could save $12,000, I would, it's, only costs 47 cents to send them a letter.
I'm still of the opinion it's in town and it's the town's responsibility. That's my, what we discussed it last time and I thought Mr. Collins was, was, that we thought we were better partnering on some other things and it's out of...
Ms. Mashburn, the Town of Highlands comes to the commissioners all the time. $700,000 for recreation, a million dollars for broadband, $50,000 for a park, and I don't see anything wrong with asking them if they would partner with us for $12,000.
That's fine, I just think the board needs to vote on it.
Okay.
If that's what they want to do, then that's fine.
I'm just, I'm just asking them if, if there would be opposition. We can go ahead with this, but ask them if they would be willing to pay for the four crosswalks in front of the courthouse. That's all I'm asking. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. right. So I guess we need for a motion, counselor, if we're going to do this, and can we add into the motion that we will at least ask if they would be willing to pay for the crosswalks in front of the courthouse?
If that's the will of the council.
Yes.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we fund twenty-two thousand dollars to work with the DOT to do this crosswalk project. Ask the county if they would like to contribute on this or another project in the future. There's plenty of work to be done where we can work together. If, this is going to make everybody happy. If they want to help, that's great. If they want to help on something else, that's great also.
All right. Is there second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, two and three. Okay. All right. D. Town Bridge Betterment Cost for Project B five-one-two-five. Town Bridge. Matter of Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is just kind of a, an update and an amendment to the original proposal for the new bridge located in town. The original estimate that the town received back in March eighth of twenty-fourteen, that's in your agenda packet, was a proposal from NC DOT that it would cost the town approximately, and an estimate, key word, thirty-six thousand dollars. Since completion of the project, the actual estimate is now, or actual final, is fifty-four thousand, five hundred, seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. So that's an increase of eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. The breakdown where your biggest increase is coming is your generic guardrail. That ended up being a total of twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. And then the vertical concrete barrier was thirty-three thousand, one seventy-two fifty. So we have looked at this with legal, and it does look like we, of course, would be obligated to pay this. So what we're asking council tonight is to look at allowing us to take the additional eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars from Powellville. We originally had thirty-six thousand that we paid out from Powellville.
I have looked at this, Mr. Mayor, and I'd urge the council not to overread. We have done lots and lots of projects with DOT, and they give us an estimate, and it is all, I've never had this happen before where we got way out of whack with what we thought we had entered into. I think if you look at the numbers, it's, the difference is the rail. And I don't know whether on, the estimate on the front end left that out, and that's what the difference is. I mean, that's, that's like the, the difference here. Also, looking back at the minutes, I'm around, I just, I'm sorry, I just now noticed that it does say the options that were laid out for the Board of Alderman at that time were the, the vertical face concrete barrier, forty-two inch, although rail on top, thirty-six thousand. Then it does talk about options with a metal handrail, and that's fifty-six thousand. So that's almost exactly the amount of what they did. Did we not also talk through adding rail on? I've seen the window, there's times where we talked about, now they've come back to us and if we want to do that instead. Is it possible we did amend that agreement? We just didn't want to have that from us?
I don't believe so, but regardless, we owe DOT eighty thousand dollars.
It was also a long time ago.
Yeah.
I vaguely remember they were going to throw in the rail, sort of deal, wasn't it?
I remember something later that we added.
They were going to throw in something.
I don't remember. I'm honest.
I suggest, Mr. Mayor, let us make sure there wasn't at some point a formal change.
Regardless.
You did agree back then that you would, would fund this and that the estimate was thirty-six thousand. Obviously, we don't, we're going to be careful, more careful in the future to make sure we understand what, how much something could change and where, you know, things are not going to be expected to double. And, and if they are, we'll urge caution before we enter into it. So I don't know if there's any, if they need to, uh,
Preferably, just so we can close books out at the end of the year.
So can you tell me exactly what the-
The, the motion could be to, it would be for a total of fifty-four thousand, five hundred, seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, which is an increase from your original thirty-six that was approved of eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
To be paid from Powellville.
To be paid from Powellville.
Well, I'll move that we do it.
Okay. We have a motion?
A second.
Second. All in favor? All right. Okay. Matter of Manager, I think you've got some information on the town parking lot on Phillips Street.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. At our budget work session, I believe Councilmember Cole Pepper had brought this up, and administration agreed to research the parking lot that the town owns on Phillips Street. It's currently the D and L Body Shop. I reached out to the owner, Mr. Rob Thompson, earlier last week, and he said that the D and L did not have any desire to lease this property, that basically all they, they currently do mow the property. Occasionally, they said they may have some customers park there, but they have the lower level. So I bring that before you to let you know that, to acknowledge, there is not a current lease agreement, and D and L does not wish to pursue a lease agreement because they don't use it necessarily. The one request, they did say that if the town were to take that over and maybe re, restripe it or put some signage up, is they do have a dumpster that they do keep on the property. I went down there and looked at it. It is out of the way. They would like to be able to keep their dumpster there. So that's just information. If the, if the board wants to take that under advisement tonight and think about it, like I said, administration said we'd follow up. You know, if you, if you want us to look at the future about going down there and doing some maintenance to it, because it is a neglected lot, anyone can see that, and putting up some additional signage, I mean, we can discuss that tonight or in the future, certainly at the will of the council.
Do you think people would park there if we advertised it?
You know, I think they might, because I think people have always thought that was a private lot, but you just, you just don't know. It is an uphill walk.
Yeah.
You know, it wouldn't cost much to slick it up and put public park in, then just monitor, observe it, see if it's going to get any play or not.
Do we have an extra parking banner?
We can figure something out.
Yeah.
It would be very minimum to, to bring it up, just to let it look halfway decent.
How many places does it-
I'll be honest, I don't know.
It's twenty-four if you count it by the aerial, or there has been twenty-four there before.
You know, if we could get it halfway.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there may be businesses that are closer to that parking lot than other parking lots that may want to park there.
Sure, up on Palm Street.
Suggesting just a quick license agreement.
I mean, otherwise, find out what does market value and sell it. I mean, we're not going to use it for anything. Get it back.
It might benefit the Drake employees that are parked there.
It wouldn't hurt to try it.
Yeah.
You think you'd be interested in buying or leasing it?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Go talk to them.
Put enough lipstick on that pig.
Is that how you talk to your clients, Joe?
Okay. Water and sewer allocation for Angel Medical Center. I think that we have, matter of manager, you have some information?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. In your agenda packet, you have got a letter for allocation request for water and sewer from Angel Medical Center. I do believe there's some representatives here tonight if there's any questions the board may have from them, but this is a relatively standard request. We have looked at this internally, and we do believe that this will suffice with their, what they're needing.
Let me ask one quick question here. What, what is going to happen to the old hospital?
So right now, they, they have no definitive answer of what's happening with the old hospital. Our CEO, Karen, she, we were discussing that one last week, and she said there's a lot of, a lot of different avenues are coming her way. So this is still wide open. She's really not clear.
One other quick question. How many beds do you have right now?
Right now, there's twenty-eight. It's licensed for twenty-eight.
No, in, in the present hospital?
In the present hospital.
Only twenty-eight beds in the present hospital?
It, it is licensed for twenty-eight beds as a critical access hospital.
Okay. Is that, that, that's total beds?
Right. Now, so the hospital seems a lot bigger than twenty-eight bed because at one point you had a, like a mental health-
Yes, we did.
Right? So, but that section is closed off.
Okay. But I thought it was licensed for fifty-nine beds.
No. No. So it's a, right now, it's considered critical access. And so in order to maintain that status, it's the-
And, and the number of employees that you have?
Uh, the number of employees. Do you remember what we discussed?
The, the intent for the new facility is to have about two hundred and fifty employees.
All right. So you're, you're, you're asking to build a replacement hospital, and it will be, I guess the, the site's not a secret.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do, and as your end use administrator, Justin emailed everybody just to caution about how much you get into that, that particular topic, because it will be the subject of a special use. So that, which is quasi judicial, and everybody look at me when I, I know when I say quasi judicial, your eyes want to blaze up.
As long as you've got Brownies in the kitchen and Vanish Me, it's fine.
Please, please don't delve into that topic too much until it comes before use to that.
Of course, you know my feeling on that quite well. Okay, then.
I have a question. Is this allocation based on inside the city limits or outside the city limits?
Inside, because that property, the, the potential is annexed. So it would be an insider.
Thank you.
Are we, are we satisfied that what they're asking is probably going to suit their needs?
Yes.
Because once a hospital's built, we can't go there and turn the water off, you know what I'm saying? So we just kind of want to make sure that it's educated, you know, but yeah.
Yes. Looking at historical data, we're right in line with the current hospital.
Okay. All right. Then if there's no further discussion, anybody want to make a motion to grant this allocation?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second. All in favor? Okay. The next item, gentlemen, thank you. Thank you. We don't have anything earth shaking after this. Feel free to leave if you want to.
I'm having so much fun.
Otherwise, I will do something to keep you here for hours.
No.
Okay. The next thing is a very important discussion on the joint meeting dates with Macon County. Town of Highlands, I think we're the host this go around.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just wanted to kind of bring this to the forethought of everyone's mind. It would be the town of Franklin's turn to host the joint meeting. So if the board wants to maybe just start thinking about, would you want to do something in, in the month of June, or do you want to postpone something in July? Just maybe start thinking about some dates, so then I can reach out to our county manager and the town manager of Highlands and see if those dates coincide with their councils as well.
When was our last one?
That we hosted?
No.
Oh.
It's in Highlands, so.
Oh, it was back during the fall.
Years during the fall.
In theory, it'd be about every four months, I guess.
Yes, sir.
So we, did we miss a cycle?
I think it was about six months ago, wasn't it?
Was it?
I think so.
So we're missing a cycle, so it's been.
A couple of years ago, it got off cycle. We normally host in the summer, so it would be our turn to host this summer.
This used to be late July or early August.
Okay.
Okay.
I made you go on late July, early August.
That's when we can have that.
Okay. You'll check some dates and let us know when, stood with the other two.
Come back at your July meeting and give some proposed dates.
Yes. I guess we ought to have engraved invitations then. So, all right. Let's go around the table. If anybody's got anything, Mr. Kendrick?
You got your banners?
Oh, that's right, the banners. I forgot to write it down. We, believe it or not, I have had several requests of people that want the old Discover Franklin banners that are coming down. They want them for souvenirs, what have you. So I guess what I need is a motion to surplus them. And do we want to, if we do surplus them, can we give them away on a first come, first served basis?
No, I think we need to sell it a little bit.
For the old banners?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. People want them, they don't.
I'll buy them as a lot if you put them on the gov deals.
I mean, what, ten dollars a piece? How many we have, Bob? I mean, how, how many are we talking about?
I, I really don't know off the top of my head. At least twenty or more, probably more. This is just phase one, because phase two, in our committee, Ms. McRae, Ms. Mashburn, I mean, we'll have several.
If there's somebody that deserves one, Bob, you're thinking of, that's done something for the town, I think we can give a few of them away, but I think there is a value there that we can sell them.
What could we possibly get out of it with the trouble that it would take to, to sell them and record keeping and all that? I don't know.
I'd give two hundred bucks for them.
Well, I'm thinking more about ten thousand.
I probably wouldn't do that.
Well, you probably wouldn't get the banners.
From, from zero to ten thousand.
But I tell you what, there may not be a, a value to it, but there is a PR value to it, I think.
There is, but if you gave them away, somebody would want all of them. All of a sudden, they'd have them all. It wouldn't-
No, I'm thinking about one per request, maybe, so.
I don't know.
Personally, I don't, I don't believe I want one.
How many people are clamoring for them?
I've had three people call me and ask me that, and, and actually, this has gotten on Facebook, that some people are wanting to have the banners. And whatever, whatever y'all want to do, it's a-
We could hang them, you know, from the ceiling.
In here?
No joke. Well, that'd be okay.
Well, let's, can we just surplus it first and then decide what we're going to do with them?
Like our normal protocols.
Yeah, and then decide what to do with them. Let's see what the demand is. Would that be okay with you?
Well, that's fine. I just think that, I mean, I don't know what they're worth. I don't know what condition they're in. I don't even know for sure what size. I'd give twenty dollars for one in a minute, just, just to, you know, just to have a part of it.
You want, you going to give us cash or credit?
Cash, cash.
I don't mind telling you, my heart's-
Joe, I will tell you, I will do this for you. I will give you my allotment of my badge. You can have it and keep the twenty dollars.
There's at least one Franklin in every state, too. So this is a, a national product we've got on our hands here.
Oh, it's the major things that hit us bogged down.
Well, we, we can hit seven o'clock yet, so we can't say we're bogged.
Uh, no, no, not yet, but it's, it's-
I'm hoping that we surplus them.
All right. We have a motion to surplus it.
Second.
And all in favor? And then we'll decide what we're going to do with it.
Yeah.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
All right. Let's put it in the Franklin press, the poll. What should the town do with the old banners?
I'm sure to mention that.
Okay. I'm holding you to this, Jake. Let me just tell you, I'm holding you to it. All right. Adam, you got anything, sir?
Um, no, just like to thank the town staff, apartments, all the work they do on the budget. Think we're pretty lucky to have it. Good, good job.
Went very smoothly. I second that.
Good. Ms. McRae?
Oh, I just also like to say at the joint meeting, I'd like to see a discussion about littering and how to deal with that issue around here. Because I, that's some of the people who spoke, the very same issue. I walk quite a mile of work every day, and it's, you know, no matter how much you pick up, there's always more there. So it's got to be education or some way to hit that a different direction than picking it up.
I still say the best way to deal with the litter is to outlaw drive-in windows.
Good luck with that.
What is, what percentage of litter would you say comes from a drive-through window?
Above fifty.
It's, it's outrageous. Okay, Ms. McRae?
I'm fine.
Ms. Mashburn? Cole Pepper?
Couple things to the people in the audience. The transportation survey, it's online, makingmoves.metroquest.com. I don't know if the media wants to pick it up and publish it, but the more feedback we get about transportation needs, pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular, whatever, the better information we'll have. Second, yeah, I, I like what the gentleman said about litter. I think actually some sort of program that actually just taught kindergarten kids, first grade kids about littering would be beneficial. I don't know that it's in our wheelhouse to do that, though, but that would certainly head them off the pass. Third, the board retreat. Did we want to discuss that ever?
The what?
Board retreat. Do we want to have a board retreat and talk about our hopes, fears, and desires?
In all likelihood, we're pretty darned close to the next election. It probably would fit better if there's some new faces.
Fair enough.
Generally, you know, it's, it's a time that you have those, try to get your common plans going, and so it, you know, it could be that it gets, during that time period.
Okay. Ms. Collins, you have anything, sir?
Just like to thank Adam for all his work on the budget with us.
Oh, yeah. You're welcome.
Uh, there is one thing I'd like to say. Just, we have worked, I've been working with the School of Government. The School of Government has some of the finest municipal instruction in the world, anywhere. The trouble is, it's three hundred miles from us. So what we have done, the School of Government has agreed to bring some of those courses on municipal government. I think I sent all of you a email about it. They're going to bring it to Western Carolina University. And then we have also, one of the sessions will be a mock town board meeting that will be in this room. Don't let us know when, but it's all set up, and they're going to have to do role playing and all that business. And I may need some of y'all as professional agitators, if you would. So anyhow, I just want to let you know the School of Government has listened to the municipalities of the western part of the state, and they're going to be coming to us rather than us having to go to them, which is a pretty long, expensive trip for a lot of folks.
When do you sign up for that program, man?
Uh, I think I put it in there, June the twenty-first.
About June twenty-first.
Yeah. Did you check your mail?
Yeah, yeah, I got it. I just wanted to be reminded.
I believe it's June the twenty-first. All right. Any further questions? Anything before we entertain a motion to adjourn? All right. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Second. All in favor?